The Hubbard Stitt Planning Board. Planning Board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded. This meeting is being held both in person and virtually through Zoom pursuant to, we need to fix the reference there because there's an actual MGL now.
Okay.
Presuaded to Mass General Law. Having public meetings to be conducted remotely so that board and committee members as well as members of the public can participate remotely. So first thing on the agenda is public comments. Do we have any comments from any member of the public on anything that is not on the agenda? Anything from anybody on the board? All right, so moving down the list, we have minutes for approval and there were some minutes that were in the drive and I believe are also in here in front of you.
In the email.
If you haven't already, please take a quick look at them and once you have, can I get a motion for acceptance?
Is everybody else?
I remember I had them, now they're not opening up. Bear with me.
Okay. And I'll take a motion if somebody would like to make one.
One second if you don't mind, I thought I had found something in it that I wanted to make a comment on, but.
But we can also do that during discussion.
Well, then I'll make a motion that we accept the meetings that the meeting minutes of the third of January twenty twenty four. I will note that I was not present. Uh, I did view the, uh, I did view the meeting online, uh, not the online, but on the, uh, on the YouTube.
That's perfectly fine. Uh, do I have a second?
I'll make a second.
Here are the first and a second, uh, open to discussion.
Yeah. Quick question, there is a term that's really confusing and again, this is just Article Four, this is a crisp Monroe. Article Four, changes need to happen. A hybrid approach, farms for necessary uses need to a verified farm.
Needs to be a verified farm.
Okay, and so I did quite understand what this was all about, if you can maybe expound on that.
Where is this on the agenda?
This is on, uh.
It's the last comment.
Oh, okay.
Last comment and it's, uh, maybe you can comment on it, Chris, uh, Christopher.
Yeah, I believe the discussion was, um, uh, to accomplish some of the goals, we're gonna need to look at making some changes to Article Four. Uh, and doing a hybrid approach where there's changes to Article Four in addition to the, um, the article for the, uh, rural opportunity.
Gotcha, okay, now I understand that what you meant by the term hybrid. Thank you, uh, that was my question and, uh, I have no other concerns or comments.
Anybody have anything else? All right, following a vote.
Coleman's eye.
Steiger, eye.
Jack, eye.
And the chair has eye, the minutes are accepted. Uh, and just in the future, we, um, we accept the minutes, not approve them.
Accept.
Moving on to new business, we need to, uh, we need to look at an A and R that we already looked at because there were a couple of changes that needed to be made. Can you tell us what's going on there?
What happened was after my wife took it to the registry, I looked at it again, it's like, this isn't right. So what, uh, the engineer had done, and I brought the, the original that you guys signed off on. Because on the original, it was showing eight acres and it was really supposed to be two point seven acres. So it was a misprint on his part. So that was the ones you, you sent it, signed off on last month and I caught it when it came back, so.
Oh, that's okay.
So.
Good thing you caught it.
Well, you know, it's gotta be right.
Right.
All right, so, so that was it.
And so your representation to us is that there's no other changes to the plan as accepted and signed other than that one change right there.
Correct.
Right, so, um, would the board like to run back through the checklist or work off the assumption that one thing's fixed and we can.
I was not here, so, I mean. Who signed last time?
I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Yeah, the engineer went through the checklist at the last, at last meeting, upland, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
And if we're getting, um, testimony here that the only change is the acreage error.
Right. He felt really bad about it.
We can spare the agony of going through that again.
Right, right, sure. Things happen. Well, I, I, you know, I kinda looked it over too and I, I missed it and then it didn't, whatever, you know.
You, why'd you caught it, so it doesn't run out any problem on the road?
Yeah.
So what are we signing is just a Mylar?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so if that works for everybody, we can sign that.
Okay.
So we'll only, well, I think we all will sign who are here.
Well, do we need a, we don't need to vote on it, that's right.
Oh, that's an A and R.
Yeah, so we'll just sign it, yeah, that's right.
Yep.
And so I, I just wanna make sure, you did not submit anything at all with the registry, right?
Well, my wife submitted the, she, we have to run down there and resubmit this one.
To replace the other one.
To replace the other one.
I'm, I'm.
The wrong one.
No, no, that's, that, that is fine, I'm just concerned about the signatures being out of work. This is the first time this has ever happened to us here.
I, it, it shouldn't matter because what they'll end up doing is it's not like you can.
They'll register, they, they will check it against what is registered from a signatures perspective.
Correct.
They'll see some new signatures which are mine and Erica's and will not see Mr. DiMalias. I understand that there's a new, uh, group of individuals.
Yeah, which should, which should be fine because they're just gonna record it as a new document. It's not like they can go in and replace the document that's in the system.
Gotcha.
They would just record, um.
To replace the old.
A canceled reference to the old one.
So I'll make sure you don't have to go a third time then.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The most recent one chronologically will.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, there, there's no undo once something gets recorded.
And should I read it?
Um, I'm not sure.
Who's markers? Thank you.
Then you go sign them out. That needs to be a paper trail.
Did you want it?
Yeah, I will take it. I will exchange these.
So that's the due out, that's the old copy.
This is the old copy, okay.
I can drop you off?
Yes, you can drop me off a new copy?
Sure. I should have brought one that was.
Bring a new copy to my office so I can give you the outdated copy.
Okay. Great.
May exchange.
Thank you all.
Good luck.
Thank you for coming.
Take care.
All right, so moving down the agenda, we have marijuana special permit application process. Originally, this was gonna be Nate presenting to us, uh, but, um, but that ultimately is being held. So I had asked Nate to look into it with paid staff and council, uh, what we could do for better establishing fees for our special permit process, especially since we have special permits coming up for cannabis facilities. And it would be good to have all of that clearly expressed in writing ahead of time who has to deposit what and when. And Nate put together a draft, he was gonna present it to us tonight, but council suggested that it needs more work before it gets presented because there's some things we can do through administrative rule and then some things, uh, if it conflicts with the zoning bylaw, we can't do. So a more thorough analysis of that needs to be done. So we're gonna come back to that and have more of a discussion about it, uh, not tonight, but at a future meeting. But that was actually gonna be a pretty big portion of our meeting tonight that, you know, is essentially loaded. So then the, um.
Ask a point of information to the chair. I know that, uh, the special permits typically have and not only the application process, but they have a fee that goes along with.
Look me out, I'm stuck in your pocket.
I just was answering. I know that there's a fee that is associated with it. My question to the chair and to the board here is, is I'm not, uh, and this is just a thought process that I'm just going through here. Special permits have been, um, in the past couple of years, uh, cell towers is a very good example as well as the ones that we have had to deal with from the marijuana, um, applications. They've been costly to this board. When I say costly, I mean not just on terms of only the manpower here, but also from an administrative perspective. And so I am wondering as to whether or not the fees for special permits can be graduated or maybe even applied differently to the different type of categories of special permits that are coming in. We have sometimes special permits that are coming in which are fairly straightforward, simple. Think of it almost like a canned process. Whereas, uh, the one that we have Pat is typically now for the marijuana, uh, applicants. The cell tower applicants have been long drawn, a lot more complex and therefore much, much more intense in terms of the resources that are expensed by this town. And that's why I'm bringing this up potentially for a subject for us to discuss in the future. I'm not asking that we discuss it today, but if you would kindly incorporate that as part of your thought process and maybe bring it as part of the agenda when we're having that general discussion.
Yeah, absolutely, I know Nate and Patricia have actually already been researching what other towns have been doing in that regard.
We did a huge fee review, I did multiple different towns, what they do with their zoning board. So we'll have that whole layout just for planning and then the different as well, but planning gets a whole big Excel spreadsheet of the different towns, what their fees are, how they compare to ours. So that is coming down the works.
I really appreciate that and again, I, I think we, we learned with, uh, first time having gone through these here again for the cell towers and also going this with regards to the marijuana, I think we learned our lesson.
Yeah.
Well, experience helps.
Well, and in, in the same regard, uh, we also. We should add it, um. Should add it to things that Patricia and Nate are looking at is essentially the same thing, but for co-located cellphone equipment. It's kind of fallen by the wayside, but we do have, we do have a slew of those that are gonna be coming in once the weather gets warm. There, there's gonna be like, well, I think they said there was only gonna be a, um. They're gonna be spread out, they're not gonna be all at once. But there'll still be a lot of them because if you're talking about two towers and at least three applications per tower and then maybe the municipal tower at a minimum, you're looking at six, so, uh, we, we should certainly look at that too. Because that's gonna be a challenge for reasons we talked about in another meeting. But yeah, there's a lot to look at there. I, um, I didn't put it on the agenda for tonight, but we'll talk about it at the next meeting, um, because it comes up in terms of master plan. I think we need to work with the select board and actually put together like a working group or a subcommittee to, to do some of this application, um. Application process revision, uh, just because I think we need to hear from some other voices and also some of the feedback I've gotten from talking to, um, well, like places associates is that it would be better if references to other, well, and from folks at the EDC. It'd be better if references to other steps that the applicant has to do with other boards and committees were clearly in the process.
Which we talked about at the last meeting.
Yeah, so there's a lot of stuff like that and I think it's gonna, it's gonna be a pretty significant project. And MRPC at the last commission meeting suggested that, uh, DLTA funding is going to lean towards, um, MBTA zoning related projects and affordable housing, so we don't know if that would get DLTA funding to have them help out with it. But, uh, which means we need to have a backup plan on how we're gonna do it ourselves if we can't get it funded. But that is, that is what we're gonna ask for, for our DLTA funding and that'll be presented to the board likely at the next meeting. So, any questions on that? All right, moving down the list, we have, um, we have received, uh, a draft copy of all of the updated chapters for the master plan. So, uh, there's a new individual over at MRPC and, um, her name is Tracy Murphy. And, uh, she went through and took a look at everything. And I haven't, I haven't gone through it in fine detail yet, but I have done some spot checking on problems that I knew were in the master plan. Specifically, some of the calculations related to developable land and some of those things, the calculations were just wrong. And they didn't appropriately show, um, partial restrictions. There was a lot of stuff like that. So what we need to talk about here is this next sheet, which is the proposed schedule for master plan review. So I think we're gonna end up having to move. We might end up having to be a little flexible and move some of these around in order to get feedback from the committees in time. Cause like housing will wanna get feedback from the Affordable Housing Committee, uh, economic development will wanna get feedback from the EDC, Cultural Historical Society, Open Space Rec. For Open Space Rec, we'll, we'll need to talk about that a bit because they're actually doing a new open space plan. And there's a chance we might wanna just smoosh those documents together, their new version and what MRPC is working on. So it's, it's a lot of information to go through. So for, so for tonight, I just wanted to talk about the, uh, the introduction of goals, um, as they are revised. Which is really just an introduction to the plan and we don't have to vote to accept it tonight, but I just wanna make sure that, that everybody gets at least an initial look at it. And we're all gonna have to commit to being, um, being fully prepared to vote on these as they come up and come around and assuming we get the feedback from the other boards and committees that come up. And it's a lot, like each one of these to go through and, and really do a serious reading. It's, each chapter is a few hours to several hours worth of work. So I know that we're asking a lot, but it's been open since twenty seventeen and we're finally gonna get to close it on our watch. So we should do that, um, and, and close it in a way where I believe it's a good usable plan. So what's everybody else's thoughts on kind of the proposed process for that? And do these dates look like they're gonna work for people?
The goal here is this to, um, get it done before the town meeting, right?
That would be ideal, I don't know if it's gonna happen because, um. Like open space and recreation, they're awesome, they do great work. They don't necessarily do it very quickly. So we can, and I don't know where they are in, in terms of their open space or creation plan, they're talking about it on the other side of the wall right now, I imagine. On where they're at for finishing it.
Starting at overtime.
Yeah. So I think there could be some holdup with the other committees and stuff and so town meeting, is there any talk on that schedule?
I'm.
I think it's in the bylaw when it has to happen, so.
Yeah, uh, it's, every, this week has been extremely weird because Candace and I are usually sharing an office and we talk back and forth with all the issues. However, I've been at the conference table, she's been.
I believe it's the second Tuesday of June.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um.
That's what I'm saying, if it is the sixteenth that we have the last date in, uh, on the calendar, it will give us potentially three, maybe four weeks. I'm, I think it's really three weeks plus any kind of adjustment slash revisions that need to take place.
So let's, let's think through this a little bit, so. At our next meeting, we could talk about land use, introduction and goals. Housing, I don't think we're pragmatically gonna get that back from the Affordable Housing Committee, uh, cause I'm, they meet. Erica, when do they meet? Have they met lately?
When do we meet?
We're gonna probably meet another like what, four months, I think we said we're gonna circle back around every about six months.
Okay, well, you guys, uh, you guys are gonna have to work with your chair and call a meeting.
Okay.
You guys have a quorum up here, are you?
No, only two of us here.
Okay. I didn't know how many people were on it.
Pretty much.
Are you looking at it mostly from an implementation perspective and outlook versus sort of like the vision goal that the MRPC is doing?
And everybody knows you Katie, but just to identify yourself for the record.
Katie on Reagan Hill Road. For, what's the question, I'm sorry.
So my question is, is, I mean, if we work through this here as a policy document or really the plan as a master plan. Versus what the housing committee is really trying to do, which is it's really more sort of looking at it from a implementation and, and, you know, more of a, this is how we're gonna, this is how we're gonna approach it.
So let me back it up and Erica can, you feel free to chime in, but basically we came to the conclusion that there is not a whole heck of a lot we can do with anything at this point in time. We reviewed documents to make sure that things were kind of there and ready, but until something kind of bubbles up, there's.
As an actual project, you mean?
Yes, there's. Yeah, there is not a lot, that's why we like circle back around in six months and see where certain things are at and if there's any available opportunities. You can correct me if you feel differently.
No, 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 that's.
Okay.
But in, in likelihood, somebody can get a meeting called in February to talk about it and provide feedback or.
With, for that, yes, if, if, yeah, the chair would just need to be notified that there needs to be a meeting so we can, yeah.
So would you like me to send it this?
Yes, to the chair.
To the chair.
Yeah.
I think what.
For Ria, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, I think what we're gonna need to do is we're gonna need to call this aspirational and I think Patricia and I are just gonna have to reach out to all of these boards and committees. Because the only, the only ones that, well, we have control over all of it, it's ultimately our final, we have the final say on this. If, if we don't like what a board or committee comes back with, we can say, well, that's great, we're gonna go with what we got, so. But with that, this should be a collaborative process where everybody gets some feedback to it, even though it's, it's fairly compressed at this point. But, so we have introduction and goals, good control over that. Land use, we have good control over that, so we could, we can talk about both of those on the seventh and have that be our starting place. And, um, and take it from there and then at that meeting, we can set the dates for some of the other ones because we should have heard back from the other chairs. And maybe we could find a way to, to compress this into the sixteenth. We're also waiting to hear back from Tracy on, um. We're trying to get Tracy to come to one of the meetings and talk about some of the changes and the seventh would be the ideal time, but we don't know if she can yet. So I think we plan, we do introduction and goals and land use on the seventh. So everybody will need to, to be fully versed and well-prepared in those, it's gonna be a bunch of work. And we'll hopefully also hear from Tracy and set the schedule for the rest of the, the sections based upon what the other chairs commit to. That, that sound like a plan?
Sure.
Awesome. Well, that's the plan, get all that?
Got it.
Plan for it, okay.
Any other questions or comments or thoughts on it?
Sounds good.
I'm just excited to have it moving forward.
We've been talking about this on the other board, started over there.
Yeah.
Years ago.
All right, so moving down the list, we have old business, battery energy storage. So my goal from this discussion is, uh, I would like to have us agree on appoint person to kind of pick this back up. And see if there's any other volunteers to work on it. So having more time to look at, at the response from the Attorney General and, and breathe a little bit. I think we actually could just make some changes to it and it would become passable.
Do you have a copy of the blue line version, the blue pencil version, as you call it?
Yeah, so, um, well, she struck down the whole bylaw, whole thing.
I, I understand that.
Yeah, and I, I, I thought there was, we didn't have that in the drive? Well, I can certainly get that out, um, if it's not in there. But, uh, but yeah, in short, uh, the fact that there was a restriction at five megawatts, um, was a problem for her.
On the upper bound?
Yes. The, the way we wrote it where all other systems and, and I don't, I don't remember us doing it this way, but that was what was in the final product. Where we said all other systems were prohibited, so.
With the understanding that other systems are the large scale battery energy storage system, not the residential, uh, battery units.
Yeah, stepping back from it and rereading it in hindsight, we prohibited all other units and that was what she hit on. And that, that was a problem too. And there's a, a couple other kind of small things for that. And they also want us to put our rationale on why we think to have, why we think we need to have some regulation on battery energy storage systems. So the, the state has taken the position that there's a compelling public interest in solar, voltaic and in, um, uh, battery energy storage systems, so that they look really skeptically upon any local regulation that tries to limit them. So I don't, I didn't see that as what we were intending to do, um, with the bylaw. I, I saw it as us doing something where we intended to be enabling battery energy storage systems.
Correct.
But they saw it the other way.
Well, because by right, there is no such thing that you can install a battery energy storage system based on our bylaws.
Well, you can now because what she did, what she also did was she went.
But not then, that was the point.
Cause she, she went into the changes we proposed for Article Four and one of the changes that we did for allowable uses in residential agricultural was battery energy storage systems subject to the provisions of Article twenty six or whatever it was. And she went in and blue penciled, subject to the restrictions of Article twenty six, so now it just says battery energy storage systems allowable by right. No restrictions whatsoever.
Before, there was nothing.
Before, there was nothing, yeah.
And so we added that as a way in which we could enter that domain.
Yep.
Similarly to how we did the, uh, solar.
Yeah.
And so that was the, that, that, that was, that was the window into, into the by, into our bylaws.
Yep. Yeah, valuable lesson on draftmanship here, um, we should split things up differently, whether we send them in for Attorney General review and how we put them on the board. But if something is not one complete piece, we shouldn't have that spill over to other places, so.
Other room, Todd.
But, uh, but yeah, I would like to, I would like to see us pick this back up because it shouldn't be by right with no process and no restrictions.
Right.
It should be similar to what we do for solar, voltaic. And I was surprised that she, she accepted all of our changes for solar, voltaic, except for pesticide use. While at the same time saying you can't have restrictions on solar, voltaic and battery energy storage. I was like, well, well, what's the answer? Like, we just put in a bunch of restrictions, but that's okay. So I think we just need to go through it.
Well.
Somebody needs to go through it with a fine tooth comb. With, with, with the proposal and what her comments are side by side and we just need to make those adjustments, um, hold a hearing and put it back up.
So you're asking for a volunteer, which I'm very happy to do because obviously this is something that was, I, I mean, I spearheaded that some time ago and that. Well, it was not just mine, I mean, Alice worked on it very diligently, you did a lot of work on it. I do however feel that there is an, given the fact that the Attorney General's office came back and looked at this here from a legal perspective and the combinations, I would like to make sure that I have a person like yourself, Christopher, because you have a legal background. because you have a legal background, uh, help with this here. Because I don't want to attempt to interpret ways around how to do this here,
Yeah.
so that it passes muster with the, uh, with, with, with the, with the Attorney General's Office.
Yeah, I'd be happy to help out that, but also remember that before this went on the warrant, it got reviewed by KP Law and KP Law did not flag this as an issue.
I agree.
And, and they came, what, what their explanation for that was, was, well, the case that the Attorney General was relying on wasn't decided until one week after your town meeting or something like that.
After. Yeah.
So, but.
Do we know of any other, do we know of any other town that has a battery energy storage system, bylaw that has, that is in place is, and, and is, uh, has been accepted by the Attorney General's Office that can be potentially even utilized as a model?
No, lots of people were actually asking for ours, because we were one of the first.
I, I remember that.
Yeah.
And they said, boy, that really looks good, why don't we use that?
Yeah.
And then it was struck down.
Yeah, so, we're gonna, I, I don't think we have to do a ton to it, I think we just need to make some changes and make it clearer. Change the upper limits, make it clear that we're not prohibiting all other units. And I, I think there's relatively easy compromises to get through just about all the stuff we objected to.
Okay. I am happy to, uh, be part of that, but as again, I am asking that this be something that I do jointly with you, so that we can ping pong the thoughts and ideas on how to make sure that this is going to not only pass through the, uh, process here in town, but also then with the Attorney General's Office. And hopefully next time around, not wait two years.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to do that, we should, uh, offline, we should schedule that, catch up pretty quick to run through that.
Right. Yeah. Happy to do so.
That way, we can, we can get this onto the spring town meeting. Any other questions or thoughts on that? So, moving down the list, there's rural opportunity zoning, um, we were gonna have Places Associates was gonna present to us tonight on what their recommendations are. That's not working out, because they got subpoenaed on another case that they work on, so they weren't able to be prepared for tonight, so.
We, we have nine months of buzzword.
For, for another commitment, so, uh.
Sorry.
He's also gonna be on for the seventh, so the seventh is gonna be a pretty medium meeting. But on the bright side, we'll be out of here pretty early tonight. I also caught up with, um, with Mark, who helped me, who actually did the lion's share of the drafting on the version that we have now. And he agreed to, to help out with, uh, with what we proposed at the last meeting, where Mark and Places Associates and I take a run through it and try to come up with a reasonable solution that's gonna be passable. So, uh, it sounds like we got all the people committed, uh, we just need to get Bill to make it to the meeting and, uh, Mark and Bill and I need to meet before that meeting too, so. That's where we're at with that. I wish we were further along, it's gonna, it's gonna be close, but we're gonna get that on, we're gonna do it. So, any other questions or thoughts on that? Moving down the list, administrative matters, we have an invoice for Places Associates. I would also like to say that the board packets, having them is awesome.
Yeah, it is.
And whatever Nate's saying about don't spoil your board, please continue to spoil your board.
It'll have a word in there.
Okay, I'm glad you like that.
Remember who your boss is.
I mean, it's Nate, but.
Uh, I also, uh, will be contacting Places Associates to make sure that we, after this invoice, we have no other outstanding invoice that got lost in the kershuffle from me to Mark to Mallory to whoever. So, um, once this one is paid, I will contact their, um, account department and make sure that we're all square away.
All right, so we have money available in the fund for this.
Yes.
Uh, and this is applicant funds, not planning board funds.
Okay, great.
So, um.
Need a motion.
Yeah, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we pay the seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty cents to Places Associates for the Demalius Hell Tower invoice.
All right, hearing, uh, first, uh, do I have a second?
I second that motion.
And it's that invoice number five, six, four, five, point oh-two.
All right, hearing, uh, first and second, any discussion?
I, I, I'm seeing this here for the first time and my apologies, I'm not very understanding of how you, how you came to this.
Come on.
How do you come to the number of seven seventy-three fifty? We have, because I'm looking at this matter that we have at the top, and then I see the additional expenses, and then I see seven seventy-three, so I'm, I'm, I'm not able to add these numbers together and. Oh, now I get it, I get it, I get it, I get it, so you previously invoiced versus what is remaining?
Yep.
And then the additional eight fifty, that's how you get the.
Yes.
Got it now.
Value completely.
And just to understand, um, the amounting question here was originally and has originally, has been paid by, or was actually paid by, um, the tower, the tower company.
Yep, on deposit at town.
There's absolutely no funds coming out from the.
Correct.
I don't have a sense, perfect, yes. And no more discussion on my end, thank you for clarifying that.
Awesome. So, question else?
Yep. If there are excess funds that we collected, do we refund to the applicant or does it go into the general fund?
So, ten percent does as, goes into the fund as administrative fee for us and then, uh, at some point, if it's not spent, it does go back to the applicant. But, um, a, a good, uh, the last few applicants have had ongoing projects and follow-up applications, so they haven't taken back the money. Like with the, uh, the cannabis grows, they've just left money on deposit with us, because they keep coming in for modifications and stuff. Um, but yeah, typically it gets closed out once, um, once there's an occupancy permit and everything's signed off.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Yes, sir.
All right, calling a vote?
Homans eye, Steiger high.
Dak high.
Uh, the chair is aye, it is approved. So. All right, so moving next down the list, uh, for administrative matters and matters not reasonably anticipated by chair. We are gonna have applications for new special permits for the grows, like we've discussed. So, at some point during that schedule, we're gonna have multiple pending special permits and we're, we're definitely awaiting quite a few special permits for co-located equipment.
Just to clarify, these are. Apologize, go ahead.
No, that's it.
No, I, th- these are because their special permits have run the course.
Yep.
Okay.
Now, is this the new for the cows and the cannabis, they're gonna be coming in both?
Yeah.
At some point in time, yeah.
Yeah. So, there'll, uh, there'll be a bunch, um.
Do we have anniversary dates that, uh, we need to focus on or?
They're July, August, something like that, yeah. We do, I don't have them off the top of my head, but yeah. So, they're going, what, um, I actually had a brief meeting with one of the applicants, where we suggested that they do a pre-sub meeting with, um, with myself and with Places Associates in order to make sure that they're putting in a good application that we can, we can move through and have work well.
I would also suggest if you would be so kind, maybe, uh, have them come up with a feedback as to the results of the work that they did this past fall or late, late into the season, which was the, uh, in, in terms of the odor-related matter.
Well.
Which had a big consequence for, uh, not only, uh, their butters, but the meetings that we had here.
Yep, I'm sure we'll have a significant amount of discussion about that.
Again, I think it'd be very important for them to address that proactively, not only in terms of what the results were this past year, but how these can be, continue to be implemented and improved on in the future.
Okay, will do.
One question, if you have this meeting with Places and yourself and cannabis, who pays Places?
They're going to.
So, it comes out of the money they've already deposited, okay.
Yep, yeah, we, we've asked, uh, for them to, they can say no, and, and which case we'll say, okay, well, submit your application. We're gonna have them review it now on the record while, so it, it's in their interest to just pay a couple hours of consulting time
Okay. Just to make sure we're not paying.
For the pre-sub meeting, yeah. And that's also one of the things that we're looking at doing with the, um, the special permit application process that we didn't get into, because it still needs a little more work.
Mm-hmm.
That, that for, for complex or contentious projects like that, doing a pre-sub would make a big difference.
Uh-huh. Uh, and if I may go back on what I was mentioning earlier, I think it's not just the odor component. I think for both, uh, I was correcting earlier, I think for the, um, the one that is across the street or next to the, um,
Soap shop.
Sorry, no, not the stove shop, the other one.
Across the street.
Royals.
Royals, uh, the water issue. Cause that was also a big, uh, suggestion.
Yeah, well, we'll certainly need to, to follow up on it. I know, so one of the reasons of looking at the process and doing the pre-sub is because having, having somebody go through the entire special permit process fresh is probably unreasonably onerous. So, one of the things that they can do is they can, they can make specific requests for us to, um, to waive some requirements and my thought on that is we would never do that unless our consultant said it was okay to rely on the old stuff or there was a good reason not to. So, that's why I think they really need to work with our consultant ahead of time.
Mm-hmm.
Before they even come in and start asking us, well, do we waive this report? Well, what about the environmental analysis, like, what, what can we just use from the old one? Cause it's, it's not fair to the applicant to make them hop back through what I think, and don't quote me the number, but it was deep into.
Whoa.
It was deep into the six figures of consulting fees.
Mm-hmm.
So, it, it would be.
It was, uh, three thousand and change for just that one invoice for consulting fees
Yeah. Yeah, for just.
That I sent to just one of the.
Items.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it was about three thousand, uh, so.
Yeah, there was, there was a lot of money, so we, we can't say that at the same time that we're being, going into business and not at least give them the opportunity.
That's reasonable.
To be smart about, um, what they ask for by giving them access to the consultant ahead of time, so.
Absolutely.
It's gonna make everybody's life easier.
Any updates from the state, put it on any of these rules about all this, everything still in the?
Yeah, there was, there is a proposed rule that's out, I haven't read it, it's huge, Nate's currently working on it and so is the select board. I don't think they love it, but it is what it is.
Nobody loves anything.
Excuse me?
Nobody loves anything.
Great.
I mean, I love open space, like.
Yeah.
But the issues with CCC are still very much a work in progress?
Yeah, the Nate's combing through it with legal on what, where it stands, but yeah, it's, uh, very lengthy. I'm like, ugh, I don't wanna read this, like, I can only imagine what he's gonna say.
Yeah. Well, and because of all those competing issues, Nate's gonna stay pretty involved in the process on it, because they're, the select board has a vested interest. So, we're not just gonna be left to our own on this, we'll be pretty well supported by the state staff.
Thank you.
So.
That'll be good.
All right, so, anybody else have any comments or anything not reasonably anticipated?
Uh, just a general question, I mean, is there anything else that the chair anticipates that we may, as a board, want to present as part of the annual town meeting, other than what has already been discussed? Is there anything else that we need to be prepared, because I know the last year, there was this, it, there was this discussion about, we're, we're, we're doing some, some tactical changes in some of these bylaws, but then we were planning to make some more intense for this year, so that's why I'm asking the question. And I know that we're talking about BES again, battery energy storage, uh, what's your, what's your, what's your thought?
Well, we're, with BES coming back.
Yep.
Um, and what we have to do to get the rural opportunity over the finish line in the master plan, I think that's gonna fill up our bandwidth unless somebody has a project that they wanna take on and specifically leave themselves on it, in which case I will fully support them, but I don't have the bandwidth.
I. No, I, I, I'm thinking more that the, uh, the solar was something that was kind of like in our, the back of our mind, we were doing these tr- these tactical changes.
Mm-hmm.
But there was a, uh, discussion that took place back in twenty twenty-three as to that is more like a stopgap, we need to do something about this here right away, but let's do something in the coming, uh, for the coming year, that's why I'm asking again the question.
Yeah. And, and I hear you on that, and that, that was definitely what our stated position was. But the Attorney General's position out of, uh, what was in the letter related to BES and that, that case saying that local governments shouldn't be restricting them.
Mm-hmm.
I think it, it changed that task to be one that's a lot harder and will require a lot more work to get through the Attorney General's Office. I don't think we can just make a couple more adjustments and tinker with it, like, we would have to work with counsel and, and, and really. We could potentially bring that up, um, obviously on a separate, um, separate article from, a separate, um, separate warrant from the other one, we could.
Mm-hmm. And I'm not suggesting that we have to tackle solar, I'm just saying that there were, I think that, that was one that I clearly remember had, we had some discussion on, but I think we also were looking at potentially some of the other, um, bylaws that potentially needed some more rigor and review and, and, and to your point, fixing.
Yeah, the, well, the, we did a prioritization list.
Mm-hmm.
And the thing that came out number one was the application special permit process.
Correct.
So, that, that I don't think we're gonna have ready for the next town meeting.
Okay.
Um, I anticipate, based upon the discussion on what's gonna go on with the special permit process and what's gonna go on with, um, uh, some of this other stuff, that we're just gonna have to do that as a working group. And, uh, that, that cross-functional working group with some select board folks and some planning board folks and Nate and Patricia, so. Uh, yeah, I, which, which isn't gonna be ready for the meeting. If, where, that potentially is gonna have a whole bunch of articles that have to get voted on in order to make those adjustments. So, that could be something that could potentially be worthwhile doing for.
October?
Yeah, doing a special town meeting and doing a zone of ploosa. And I know Nate particularly doesn't love the idea of having a fall town meeting if we don't need one, but it's also pretty high on, um, that particular project is pretty high on his, um, uh, performance review goals.
Mm-hmm.
So, he's pretty committed to working with us to try to get us to, to do something there.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
But, yeah, yeah, and unfortunately, I, I think we have so much stuff, I think we're, we're just gonna get the battery energy storage, the rural opportunity, um, and then present the master plan, even though it's not voted on a town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
It, it would just be kind of announced for it and be out there.
Good to get it done.
Yeah. So, any, anything else? All right, how about a motion?
I'll make that motion.
You're in a first.
More motion?
Yeah. You're in a first, I'm in a second.
Wow.
I second the motion to adjourn.
You're in a first and a second, non-debatable, calling a vote?
Homans eye.
Steiger aye.
Dak aye.
Monroe aye.
One of these days, anyone will say nay.